All right, 6:00 PM, call us meeting to order, please stand for the play.
Presentation from the Transportation Department, Mary Bangle. All right. As I get ready for my annual presentation each year, I always think about the fact that safety is the kind of the crux of everything we do in our department, from the type of vehicles we buy to the way we interact with our kids. So this evening I'll talk about some of our safety topics, the requirements that we follow, and some extra things we do within our department and our district. And then I'll also touch upon electric vehicle initiative and a little bit about what we've learned so far. Starting out with safety. Student safety is kind of my, my pet thing. I love student safety. In my opinion, we will never stop passing motorists from making poor choices, being on their cell phones, talking to their kids in the backseat, eating breakfast, whatever the case may be. And no matter what we do as far as laws go or initiatives, safety initiatives, you know, cops out there on the road or whatever, we don't have any control over those folks. But the people that we do have control over are our own staff and making sure that they know exactly all of the procedures to follow. Our students, educating our parents and our teachers and everybody that's involved in our kid, our kid's safety. So we never have a kid outside the bus in a position where he or she could get hit by a car. Because unfortunately, it does happen more often than it should in New York and throughout the whole country. So we really spend a lot of time focusing on safety. And the first bullet is the requirement. So State Ed requires that we do three safety drills a year. And, and we do those, we do those on the bus. The kids learn about how to get off the bus in an evacuation, how to go out the back door, how to use the radio if something happens to the driver, things like that. But there's a lot of stuff that the kids learn in, in the span of 10 minutes. It's too much for them all at once. There are a lot of topics. And to really teach them everything, we'd need an hour and then the kids would lose interest. So we go, we go above and beyond that here and we do, we really actually start during the summer. For our pre-K and kindergarten kiddos, we invite them in at the end of August. So it's kind of fresh in their mind at the start of a school year. They can bring, you know, parents, grandparents, guardian, whoever happens to be with the kids that day, we invite them in. And they get to check out the bus, maybe be a little less nervous about getting it on, on it the first time and the first day of school. And a staff member's on the bus with them and they go for just a little field trip around the block, our five mile block here. And they come back and they practice getting off the bus and following the procedures to get off safely. So we start out there and like I said, students and parents are involved also. Then we do our, safety drill has to be done in the first week of school. And also within that first week of school, Mrs. Carter at the GLP has been a great partner over the last few years in helping us. And she gives us a full day with the kids. So we go one class at a time. They start out with a video. It's a really neat Winnie the Pooh video that Disney made for bus safety. And I won't tell you the whole story, but it's a really cool video and it's super age appropriate for the GLP level kids. And then they go on a ride. And this is another thing where we invite the parents to come in. And so not all the parents can, but we've seen over the last few years that more and more parents are joining us. So the parents see the video also with their kids. They go on the ride with their kids. When we get back to the school, I'm going to back up here just a little bit to the beginning. But this picture is from this year in September. And they go for around the block again. They come back to the GLP and they learn how to get off the bus safely. Because it's more than just looking at the driver and waiting for the signal. There's a whole bunch of steps the kids are supposed to take in order to do everything safely. So we take two kids at a time. You can see here, there's a few kids that have already done it. And they're standing at the, on this side with their teacher and our staff member takes them two by two and they go through the whole process. So they can really get a grasp on it because repetition is key. And there really are a lot of things the kids have to remember when they do that. Excuse me. So that's one of the things we do that's above and beyond here. Mrs. LaRosa invites us in to do an assembly here in the auditorium with the elementary kids, where they watch a different video that was actually produced by State Ed many years ago. Some of you guys have probably seen it where the little boy takes his dinosaur egg to show and tell and learns all about bus safety. So we do that here with the whole third through fifth grade here. Then we also do hands-on training during phys ed time. So the GLP teachers have done theirs already. They let us know when they'd like a bus and they, they pick a nice weather day. The kids get to practice jumping out the back of the bus. They're in sneakers, so they're safe. We don't need to worry that they're, you know, going to trip or fall. We put mats down, so, so we don't need to worry. And they learn again about bus safety and how to sit, how to behave on the bus and those types of things. We do that also at the elementary and the high school level, but we'll be doing that throughout the course of the year. Then we also have a neat little trifold brochure that we created that we send out with our summer, our summer transportation letter. And when we get new families in the district and it kind of starts out right at the beginning of the day, getting up, getting ready for school on time, not rushing to be ready, how to sit on the bus and some, some district things for the parents, like at what age a kid can get off the bus alone. So we have that also that we created. We also purchased through PTSI, who is the organization that's contracted by State Ed to do most of their education. They have a really cool safety coloring book. So the kids that do the safety day at the GLP get that coloring book. When we get new families or if we have kids who are maybe need some reminders on it, we can send that home with them. And I usually follow that up with a phone call to the parent to let them know that it's coming home and why. And hopefully they can spend some time with the kids. The next one is continuous improvement goals for the drivers and the attendants. And that's mostly about me being a stickler for following all the procedures. So I sub a lot, I drive a lot of bus runs, so I can see an evolution over the last two or three years, where we went from a district that was just, you know, ICU, you see me wait for my signal, to now hold the handrail, check before you step off the bottom, take 10 giant steps in front of the bus, wait for my signal, check at the center, go all the way down your driveway first, be nice to mom later and get the, the mail after we leave. So those kinds of things I get to see and then I can work with the drivers and the attendants on how to make improvements. We are also in our district very blessed with a, a large group of school aides who are willing to ride the bus. And we cross-train them for the procedures that we have on the bus. So not only do we have our bus attendants on, on some of the buses, but we have the ability to let those school aides ride along on the buses. And they're a huge help on the pre-K through fifth grade buses. Because we're, we're a district who now has 10 fewer runs than we had five years ago. A lot of that is because we just don't have the staff. So where we used to have a bus with 30 kids, now we have a bus with 50, 55, 56 kids on, on the bus with a driver strapped in facing the front and really still responsible for the kids' behavior, but unable to really take care of a lot of that. So we're very blessed with those aides that have been willing to hop on and help out. So they, they work on student behavior, staying seated, seating, being nice to each other, using your indoor, indoor voices, things like that. And then they actually get off with the, the kids and they model the crossing procedures and help them learn that. So that's been huge for us. And then finally, we have a project I'm working on through State Ed, through a instructor training program I'm doing. There will be a new pre-K through sixth grade curriculum broken down into age groups. So pre-K through first grade, second through fourth grade, and then fifth and sixth grade. They'll have a video, there will be some class curriculum, and there will be some activity sheets that'll all be age appropriate based on their grade level. So schools who, and we'll use it also, but then schools who don't have the, the ability or the time to, to come up with a lot of extra stuff for the kids and they're just using the, the three minimum drills, will be able to download this and use that. It'll have activity sheets, a lesson plan for the teachers. So if a teacher wants to use it in the classroom, they can, or they can invite our staff in to do it with them. And the whole thing will take about 15 minutes or so. So it's not a huge amount of time out of the school day, but still hits on all of those safety related items that we need to cover. So that for us, that's kind of the crux of things we've developed over the last couple of years that go beyond the state requirement minimum. And we're always looking for ideas and making improvements, adding new things. The drivers come up with some really great ideas. So I just kind of wanted to hit on some of those things that we, we do extra in Eden. Any questions about any of that before I go on? Okay. The next thing I'm just going to hit briefly on is the new electric vehicle initiative that's set by the state. And I'm sure a lot of you have been reading about it, or you may have been talking about it already. But the current goal, if nothing changes, is by 2027, we won't be allowed to purchase diesel vehicles and we'll have to purchase electric vehicles if nothing changes. Currently, there are only 310 electric vehicles in New York State. The state estimates that by 2027, they'll have about 3,000 available. So 600 some districts throughout the state, that's only a handful of, of buses for each district. So you can see where some of the bigger districts will need more, we might need less. And then if the initiative continues the way it is, by 2035, we'll have a full fleet conversion. So from 2027 on, we can't purchase diesel anymore. So the theory would be by 2035 for the full fleet to be converted. There's some positives to electric vehicles. Currently, I think there are a lot more questions than there are answers. Some things that we do know is that a bare bones gets you from point A to point B bus costs about 350,000 plus at a minimum per vehicle. We're looking into, Mr. Sartisio, Mrs. Feldman, Mr. Sitzman and I have all been looking into all of our different avenues to, to figure out how to make this happen. Mr. Sitzman's working with our electric supplier to have a, a study done to see if the, the grid can even handle it. Do we have enough electric, electric supply at our building already? What do we need to bring, bring in, those type of things? I touched a little bit on availability of vehicles. Right now, there's only a few hundred available. So it will, it will be interesting to see if they have enough vehicles available in time to, to make the, the purchase requirement happen. One of the biggest things that I see a challenge for us here is the miles that you get for a charge. So currently, in perfect weather conditions, nice, sunny out, it's not windy, it's not snowing, you're driving on flat ground. All conditions perfect, you get about 100 miles to a charge. For a lot of districts, that'll be okay. Lake Shore has a vehicle now that they're using without incident. They, they seem happy with it. But it's all, it's, everything's perfect. It's stored indoors, it's charged indoors, and it goes from point A to point B back. It sits for a few hours, it can charge, and then it goes from, you know, back again to get the kids. So for a district like Eden where we're very hilly, the Boston Hills are a challenge all by themselves with a just, a diesel vehicle. Then you add the snow and the cold and the wind and all of the other conditions that we have here. Now your, your battery capacity goes to about 50%. So with everything, like everything else, I'm sure that technology will improve and those, those batteries will be able to maintain a charge. But as it stands right now, it would be difficult for a district like us to, to do a full bus run on a single charge and then have enough downtime in between to charge it back up. It takes about four hours to charge it back up before we go out again. Some of our bus runs are 100 plus miles a day. And then, you know, factor in weather and everything and, and the charge goes down. I touched on this. The other thing is that currently, one of the issues is the availability of charging stations. So there's a district north of us that had a, a vehicle come in from Bergen, from Leonard Bus, that they brought in for a board meeting. The guy that brought it in, got it here fine, no problem at all. There was no place to charge it. So they got it to the school and they ended up having to flatbed it back because there's no place to charge it right now. So those are all things that they're working on and, and we're learning more about. For us in Eden, one of the big things we'll have to think about is the physical size and the weight of the vehicles. So a building like ours that was built in the 50s is not equipped to handle those vehicles. They're long, they're longer than our building, than our bays are, and they're taller than our ceilings are. So even if we put a better lift in, in the building, ceiling's not high enough to lift it up, to, to get it in there and work on it. So something else we have to look at is the building itself. And I guess I'm just going to cap it off with saying, this is all very new to everybody. We're learning as much as we can, as quickly as we can. We have a lot more to learn. There's a lot of information out there. There are resources out there. And I see the laws and the, the evolution of this, I think will continue to change. But we're doing our best to be ready for it when it does hit us. Any questions about the electric vehicles?
I, I've got a few, a few comments. So what, Mary, what's our longest run in terms of miles?
Our longest run currently is about 125 miles a day.
Okay. And so, and that's for, for a student that goes off clearly.
Goes off, yes.
Okay. What's our longest run within the district?
Within the district is the, the run Route 10 up in the hills. The elementary run alone is about 45 miles.
About 45 miles.
Round trip.
Round trip.
Round trip, twice a day.
Twice a day. Okay. And with the charging time, what, what I'm getting at is there's, there, there may be a possibility based on current technology, where we had one bus to do that, we may need two based on charging times.
Correct. Yeah, you're looking at the potential for needing two vehicles for, or being creative. So maybe that vehicle does a particular route in the morning, but then it has to be kept in town on a shorter route. So there's some creative ways to look at it, but theoretically, you could very possibly need two vehicles to do a single bus route here.
Sure. And with that, when that longer out of district run, there's, you know, again, based on today's technology, it's very unlikely that there will be some hours spent at that site recharging.
Yeah, the, the, one of the big issues, so even, even going on a sports trip. Let's say we're going to, to Greece or to Rochester for a cross-country trip. You're, you're going to need time there to charge it and you're going to need a facility there to charge it. So the trailblazers that are, they're hitting the ground running and they're doing this now, I, I, you know, I, I respect them for that. But a district like Eden would be, would be in a tough position because we can't get there and back without a charge, like that bus that went to, to the district north. It had to be flatbedded back. There's just, there's no place to charge a vehicle like that.
Yeah. So you, you mentioned briefly that Mr. Sitzman, our director of facilities, and, and, and you are, you're assisting with that as well. Our plan right now, so the board and the rest of the community knows, is we're not going to be trailblazers. We're going to be learners and we're going to be very methodical in our approach. With the hope and understanding that technology improves, some grace is given based on that very, very aggressive timeline. And our next step is to do an infrastructure examination. The grid, National Grid, who I'm sure they're fans of ours, because now that we are fully charged by them throughout the campus, a nice revenue stream for them, will do a, a free of charge assessment of, of the, the power capacities we currently have. I believe they'll also do some assessment of, of the infrastructure in terms of the building, a bit of that as well.
And as I understand it, NICE sort of has some capabilities out there where they'll actually come in and they'll look at our bus routes and what we need in order to make it all function effectively on, you know, in addition to that.
Yeah. And it wasn't hyperbole when, when you made a statement that our, our transportation building will not, is not suitable, it will not support that the weight of the buses, the length of the buses, the height of the buses. You know, we're, we're looking at, at having to do something pretty, pretty significantly different than what we've known historically here.
Right.
So as of '27, we can't purchase a diesel bus, is what I'm hearing?
If the governor's initiative continues on its current path, that's correct. That's not, that's just a few years, that's a few budget years down the road.
Not many. And I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, just where technology is, I'm, I'm working in this right now and we're not there yet.
Right. And like I said, I, I think it'll continue to evolve. We've, we saw a couple already at least once where the deadline was pushed down the road. I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done to get everything ready before, before they can cut us off on diesel vehicles.
So this is just New York State that's doing this, right? Not nationally? So there's still going to be nationally diesel buses built?
There will be nation, I, I think I know where you're going. I don't.
Well, I'm just, I just want to.
Think we would be allowed to purchase them and drive them here, but you never know. It's a good, it's a good idea.
Well, there's a couple, couple of things. A, if, if we're not allowed to use our dollars in '27 to purchase, depending on where things are at and just where the state is at on certain issues, we should be prepared to buy some extra buses in '26 then. I'm just, just thinking down the road. It's, I don't know, I just saw, when I was coming here, I'm, I'm just extremely frustrated right now with the, I don't know if anybody saw the new lawsuit with, against PepsiCo and pollution as of today. What a joke that is, but I'll leave that for that. But anyways, I'm just saying, we probably need to be prepared, you know, financially to, to possibly purchase. I know, I know we have a plan right now to purchase multiple buses each year. I think '26, we should probably have some funds available just in case this thing continues as is.
We've also been cognizant of the fact that we might not be able to purchase vehicles. So where we might have accessed, you know, we might have, we purchased one, traded one. We've been kind of hanging on to them beyond our, we, we kind of set that replacement cycle. We've been sort of wise on keeping them running and keeping them a little bit longer because, because we don't know what's coming down the pipe.
Well, I like, I see we're excising two of them tonight from 15.
Yeah, those, yeah, those are, those have seen their life expectancy.
Yeah. No, I know. It's, it's, it's interesting being on the board as long as we've have been. Now to start seeing that plan being excised is a little bit, yeah.
I have a quick question or two, actually. One, and I know you keep saying if the governor's plan stays as is, and let's hope that it's not, because I, I don't see how this would be feasible financially. But is there any discussion? I mean, Mary, you probably, obviously attend more transportation forums than we do. Does anybody ever talk about like a hybrid bus, like?
So when this first started out, it was all electric. Now they're, now they're looking at possibly allowing some diesel on it because the, the batteries won't warm the cabin for the kids. So they're, they're looking at maybe, it's called a Wabasto heater. There may be, they're looking at maybe allowing that to keep the cabin warm for the kids. But as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sartisio, but I think at the moment, the goal is, like propane and those choices are not on the table at the moment, to my knowledge.
I mean, it just doesn't seem financially feasible, but that's something we'll cross. But my other question is, and I don't know if I read this or if you told us or we discussed it, but it's not only the cost of the buses that increases, but don't they have to be charged indoors, like in a covered facility, which we clearly do not?
They can, they can be charged outdoors, but they lose a lot of their ability to keep the charge if it's cold or windy or if it's snowing. So ideally, yes, they need at least at minimum some kind of fencing to keep the wind and the snow from them.
Okay. Thank you.
So out of curiosity, has it been talked about, like, say, if this should happen and say a district can't, it's not feasible for a district, then what?
I don't know. Because you think about the cost that 350 I put up there, that we're talking bare bones, seats and, seats and wheels, and that's about it. So.
Are they going to give you money trees or give each district a bunch of money trees in the back?
Well, Mrs. Feld might be able to answer that better, but I think there, I think there are grants and such out there. We don't yet qualify for any of them because of our income.
The other problem's going to be, while it's going to cost more, they're going to drag the reimbursement of the district out to 12 years instead of the current five years. So it's going to put more of a burden on the local taxpayer to even afford these buses. Any that can't be bought without grants.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. So we know there's a lot of problems with this. It's alarming on many levels. We're not going to be trailblazers. We're going to continue to learn and plan long-term because that's the best that we can do. And then we need, the district needs to be in a position to be decision makers, to own our decisions, whether we like, like this idea or not. Right? There's certain things that the state says we have to do. We've been through them recently in the last few years and we have to do them. So the first thing we're going to do is find out what our, what our infrastructure needs are. And we're, we're, we're going to look at how we can address those and then we'll move forward as we can. So, you know, before you go, Mary, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you personally for all of your efforts and professionalism. Your job is incredibly difficult with, with a shrinking staff. And I, you know, I know you're driving. I know the mechanics are driving. I know Donnie's driving and everyone who, everyone who's qualified to drive can. And yet there has been, Mary, a complaint about transportation in our district. And without your leadership, that doesn't happen. And I'm going to say again that I, I am grateful for the, the high quality drivers and, and aides that we have because they interact with our students at the beginning of the day and their end of their day. They have an opportunity to start their day really well and, and end their day even better. And I see that over and over again. And I want you to know how much I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
And I wish your son happy birthday from all of us. Enjoy.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
I have to abstain. My, my husband's on there as a volunteer wrestling coach.
Okay, we have one abstaining. All right. Motion passed.
At this point, is the public comment guidelines, approximate position and time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Not everybody at once.
Moving on, new business. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of bus mechanic Joshua Bouganhagen be accepted effective November 10th, 2023. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Bouganhagen for his two and three-quarter years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Melissa Thomas be accepted effective November 24th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the termination of cleaner Wade Ovet be effective November 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Appointment guidelines. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Cheyenne Shaw be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective October 24th, 2023, and ending May 15th, 2024. Salary is based on CSA contract level for Step 1.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Jason Iwanko be permanently appointed as director of athletics, assistant principal, effective December 19th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a few comments.
Sure.
So, Mr. Iwanko. In a second, you're going to introduce who you brought with you. Okay. So why don't you make your way to the front of the, front of the auditorium, if you don't mind? Oh, Mrs. Iwanko, you have to come too. I, I want to say a few kind things, just in case the board doesn't vote yes. I want to kind of sway their vote. Okay. So, Mr. Iwanko, I, I just wanna congratulate you, uh, for, not, not, not for tenure, because you don't have that yet. Um, but for the growth that you've demonstrated in the last few years, um, you have grown into a respected. Uh, a kind and sought-after leader in this district, and, and that doesn't go without a lot of effort. So I appreciate all that you do for our student, our student athletes, and all of our students. You, you have some pretty, pretty. Varied hats that you wear here, uh, and, and you do so with, uh, with a lot of character and aplomb, so I appreciate that. So I wanna, I wanna turn this back to the board and, and after they vote, then I want you to introduce who you brought with you, okay?
All right, so where are we at? We have a second? All right, any other discussion? No? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Congratulations. Well, you, you've still got a month yet, just to let you know.
Yeah, so who'd you bring with you?
Can you say your name?
Jack Iwanko.
Oh, nice to meet you. And how old are you?
Five.
Liam, can you talk too?
Well, I don't know. I'm shy one. You're gonna say your name?
Liam, how old are you? You're three.
Why, what do you think, boys? You think you should take dad to Dairy Queen for a celebration after you leave? No. Well, thank, thanks for coming. Hawaii? You're going to Hawaii? Wow. That's awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kendall Bernardi be appointed as claims auditor effective November sixteenth. Twenty twenty-three salary is seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents per hour.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Melanie Schroder, who's a provisional clerk typist, be permanently appointed as a clerk typist. Effective November third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Judith Kazmerak be appointed on probation as a bus attendant effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And ending May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Salary is based on CSCA contract level four step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period. Elijah Dole be permanently appointed as a cleaner effective November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following be appointed as board of education representatives to share decision-making teams. Jen DeLaPenta be appointed to the district shared decision-making team for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Marlene Grunder be appointed to the Eden Elementary Decision-Making Team, replacing Jennifer Horshol for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Um, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the request for proposal for external audit be awarded to Drescher and Malucky LLP. For the twenty-four twen- through twenty-seven school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a high school balder bench grinder asset tag. A zero zero four five nine seven one one be declared accessed and disposed of as a district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following buses be declared accessed and released to Matthew's bus as trades towards incoming vehicles. Number two oh six, two thousand fifteen Thomas Vin. Do you want me to read the VIN number? All right. And number two oh seven, a two thousand fifteen Thomas Vin with that number.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following Eden Elementary office furniture be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Two office desks with returns, one oval conference table, one teacher chair on wheels, one large wooden desk. One large black file cabinet.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, fifty-six outdated teacher resource books. And materials be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the revised transportation route spreadsheet effective November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education established the standard workday for New York State and local retirement system reporting purposes. For all titles covered under district employment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the High School Student Council overnight field trip to the New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities. November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three through November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Where are they going?
Syracuse.
Business report.
Good evening. I wanted to update the board and the community that we received our Moody's rating. It was released in October nineteenth, I believe was the date. We received a rating of AA three, which is consistent with prior years. The importance and significance of this rating is this is how investors know whether or not to buy our bonds when we go out for bonding for capital projects. And it helps determine our interest rates. We also received notification that we were selected as part of the New York State Employee Retirement System Audit. And will be asked to provide information to KMPG auditors. Tax collections are on par with last year with the anticipated final numbers for the December meeting. Please note, any uncollected tax funds are sent back to Erie County. Who re-leveys them on the county tax roll, and at the end of their collection tax period, they make us whole for our levy. Whether or not they've collected from the individual taxpayer, because we cannot do that. We don't have the authority to take a house or anything like that. The county always makes us whole per law. And then just to let everybody know that we have some transformers, a circuit breaker, and a generator on consignment with Auctions International. Currently, all of those are a combined bid of nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. And the auction ends on November twenty-second, so we hope it to get a little higher. Maybe someone out there will want a bid.
Might need to keep them to charge the buses. Just saying.
Next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I just wanna take a few moments to talk to, uh, the board and the community about the district's mental health awareness initiatives. Um, going back to last year and continuing, uh, and to, to this current year. Last year, last school year, every district employee, no matter what their title or their work was, was trained in what's called youth mental health first aid. And that's a program that's to, to, designed to, uh, provide information on how to recognize and help adolescents who may be experiencing that mental health or addiction. Challenges. It's very, very valuable training, which we will continue to support in our district. And in fact, two of our staff members will be certified to conduct the training. For new employees as well as the three-year, year renewal for everyone who was trained last year. Um, in, in, in the next, next few months. Those, that's school soc- social workers, Holly Tredo and Allison Gardner. So I'm very happy and proud that we'll have some internal folks who will be able to handle that training for us going forward. So in addition to the youth mental health first aid training, we've taken the next step in training staff, students, and community members. Via a partnership with the same here, Mental Health Awareness Program. Um, this is a natural next step from our foundational work from a year ago. This past November seventh, uh, staff members experienced the first of several trainings that outlined some basic tenants of the program such as. Mental health is a continuum that everyone in the world lives in and moves on at different points in their lives. Uh, we are never stuck in one place, and we have some control over where we move on the continuum. The science of mental health and its effects on the body, positive versus maladaptive coping mechan- mechanisms to deal with emotional pain. Stress and trauma, uh, active release and rewiring exercises, and suicide prevention. That's, that was for, uh, staff training on, on November seventh. The next day, we had multiple assemblies, uh, across the district at all, all levels. That served, uh, served as the first of several trainings for our student body. Part of the unique part of this program is that we are offering training, uh, not only for our staff and students, but for our community members as well. Our first such training was November seventh, uh, the evening of November seventh, uh, which we'll hear about, uh, in a few more minutes. Uh, in total, we had, uh, including those who watched virtually about forty-five participants, which is, is fairly, fairly good for our first, uh. First presentation of this sort. Um, family and community members who are interested in attending the next evening sessions, uh, the next one is on January twenty-ninth. At Eden Elementary and the next, uh, the one that follows is on March eighteenth in the middle school, high school auditorium. Dates and times will be, uh, advertised as we get closer to those dates as well. Okay. Any questions for me on that topic at this time?
Okay, Sirtisio, was that recorded on the seventh?
I do not know if that was recorded. I, I do not know, but I can find that out for you. Okay, moving on, uh, in, in, um, this past Monday. Um, the Board of Regents, who oversees the state education department, and that, that's the decision-making body for what we do in schools. Um, and in, in this case, it was a subcommittee, which is called the Blue Ribbon Committee. Uh, that Blue Ribbon Committee presented their findings from a lengthy review of graduation requirements. The biggest takeaway is the recommendation that students have options other than Regents exams to demonstrate, demonstrate their skills and abilities. Now, while that won't affect any of you in the audience, it certainly could affect some of your siblings and, and neighbors and whatnot as we move forward. Uh, in addition, the committee is recommending coursework on civic responsibility and financial literacy. Uh, in short, the recommendations are geared towards ensuring students have opportunities and experiences. That will assist them in whatever the next stage of their life, li- life is, be at work, service, or further schooling. Although there's no set timeline, it's clear that the next steps will be for the committee or a similar group to take their recommendations and determine how schools can make the necessary changes. And adjustments. Um, I'm cautiously optimistic that moving forward, we'll be able to provide students with authentic learning experiences. And loo- in lieu of the one-day-in-time demonstration of learning that is inherent in an exam-based system. We will learn more about these potential changes in the weeks and months ahead. And, um, at the end of the, the first two-hour session, the comments were, um, the next step is determine how we can do this and what it's going to look like. Uh, another takeaway is the state understands that in terms of authentic, uh, ex, um, presentations or experiences. Um, that, that they'll have to be an agreed-upon rubric that, that will come with that. So, I mean, that makes very, very good sense to me. Since it's a state diploma and not a, a district-by-district diploma. Um, so movement in the right direction for, for, for certain. Any questions about that? Okay, so we're, we're still in construction, so I'm gonna give you an update on that as well. We are very close to the end of our capital construction project. Closeout is scheduled for December, which will allow for the state aid flow to commence as planned. As the board is aware, it's important for our state aid, uh, flow to be, to be, um, a- as planned. Because that we, we started this discussion many, many months ago, years ago, uh, in order to keep our debt service flat. And we know how important that is, right? I know, I, I just trying to make you happy today. Um, and we do have, uh, a few minor components to the project that will be completed in the next few weeks. Uh, depending, and depending on a final review of any le- unspent funds. So in addition to what you'll see very soon, uh, as soon as the, uh, as soon as the items come in. Which is the exterior wall pack lighting on all of our school buildings. That's essentially safety lighting, uh, in, in all of our school buildings. That is, uh, will be replaced with LED lighting, uh, and upgraded to that. Potential additional work includes additional wall tile at the middle, uh, high school. And what we're looking at right now is the, the walls, uh, adjacent to the library entryways, as well as across from the entryway. Is to move away from the old brown tile and utilize that, that white tile that's really been received quite warmly in, in that building. Uh, we're looking at, uh, some floor replacements in, uh, at, at the GLP, uh, actually in the special ed office. Uh, that currently is probably original linoleum, and it's time to, to modernize that a bit. We're also looking at floor replacements in the elementary library here, as well as the guidance office in this building. Um, and that is all contingent on final examination of any unspent funds for the project. Okay, any project-related questions? So finally, as mentioned previously, we will continue to examine the district needs and wants as we plan for our next capital project. And remember, our, our midterm goal there is to go out to, uh, voters a year from December, so a December. Twenty-five vote. Twenty-four vote, December twenty-four vote. It's a little late for the recove, but thank you. That's all I have. Any questions for me? Um, I'm gonna hold on that based on something I learned later in this afternoon, but thank you.
Student report.
So grade six to eight celebrated Halloween with a dance on Friday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. The high school had a hu- costume contest on Halloween. New hats, scarves, and gloves were taken to Roswell for students and staff from Breast Cancer Awareness Week in October. Food drive for Eden North Collins Food Pantry was eleven thirteen through eleven seventeen, and then non-perishable food items and cash donated on eleven seventeen. Mrs. Doctor and three students from Eden Middle School slash High School Student Council had the opportunity to attend Sandy Hook Safe Promise Club Youth Leadership Training. On eleven fourteen. At this event, students were able to learn and collaborate with youth leaders around Western New York. We are working to continue to make a positive impact on our school and community. And then Eden High School Student Council members attending New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities in Syracuse on eleven nineteen to eleven twenty, twenty-one. I mean, twenty-three. There will be three different speakers on leadership and leading on actions packed light. And then Eden Middle School, High School Student Council Toys for Todd starts December fourth and goes through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Next, we have board report roundtable.
I just wanted to speak real quick on the same here. I did attend the parent community, um, section of it. Um, with the CEO, um, Eric Cresson, um. My takeaway was, I actually had seen him before, but, um, was the perspective of mental health. That he's trying to make it a conversation that everybody has, and that when we talk about our physical health and how our well-being and how to. Um, keep us healthy that way, that we have to, also have to keep our mental health up and different breathing actives. Um, exercises and mindfulness and yoga and that. There's a whole realm of ways to work on that, not just. Medication and necessarily therapy, although those definitely help for some people. Um, he also pointed out the, that everybody has what I call a story. So that you don't know someone's background, you don't know an event or a trauma that they have been through that could affect them at any given moment, any given time. And that until you really get to know a person, um, you don't know when, um, on that spectrum of life. When something with their mental health gets sparked, or having a bad day, or a bad season, or a month, or a year, or whatever it is. Um, so I'm looking forward to, um, hopefully more community members and parents joining us into learning more about this. I'm glad that, um, teachers and, uh, students are all learning, like, we're all learning together at the same time, so I'm looking forward to this.
Fair enough.
Anybody else?
All right, the next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at six PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. twenty twenty-three at six PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education and our executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons in litigation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks for coming, everybody.